Good evening. This is the Planning Board Public Hearing on the Rezoning of the M1 District. This is Tuesday, 9th August, 2008. Please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance at the floor.
(inaudible)
Fledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and two Republic of British States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I said, this is the public hearing portion of the proposed rezoning of the M1 District, which is the mills, the mills in town. As a little background, the Planning Board has spent a lot of time and effort in arriving at the point where we are now in this draft proposal. And I want to thank everyone on the Planning Board for their hard work. It's much appreciated. The process tonight is that Diane will give us a technical and a background overview of what's gone on up to this point, and then we will open the floor for public comment. So, without any further delays?
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
Thank you. If I stand up, can you hear my voice? Does my voice carry to the back of the room?
Okay.
Very good. I'd like to thank you all for coming here this evening. My name is Diane Hardy, and I'm the Town Planner for the town of Newmarket, and I work very closely with this very fine distinguished board up here, the Planning Board. And the Planning Board has been working very, very hard over the last four or five months in trying to come up with a rezoning proposal for the M1. What I'd like to do tonight is give you a little bit of background of why we're doing this, why we're here in the first place. I'd like to give you some information on the process that we went through, which brings us here today. Also, I want to go over the general concept that the Planning Board is trying to set forth as part of this proposed zoning, and then go over the specifics of the zoning proposal, and then turn it over to you folks for questions, comments, input, feedback. This public hearing this evening is a requirement for any zoning change that goes before the Planning Board, before the town. And the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from you folks. We want to hear from the residents. We want to hear from the affected abutters. We want to hear from people who have an interest, a development interest in this area, as well as general citizens and property owners. So this is your opportunity to respond and react to what we're proposing and give us some feedback and input. And I always think of these things as kind of a positive thing, a healthy exchange of information, so that we can start a dialogue and make sure we kind of understand each other what our concerns are, where we need to be going with this. To give you a little bit of an overview, we are referring to the M1 District, which is located in our downtown area. And there are a few maps up here. I don't know if you folks have, have some. I don't know if I have enough to go around, but please, if you have one, thanks. Pass them along. Thank you. You got one? Two. To acclimate you, we are talking about the M1 District, which is in our downtown area, which is shown in pink on this map. And of course, this white area depicts the Lamprey River, and we're talking about the eastern portion of the Lamprey River from the corner of Bay Road, going down Bay Road and incorporating the Bryant Rock property. And then on the western side of the river, from this point at the river where the bridge is, going down to the Rivermore property and incorporating property aligned with waterfronts, including the historic mill buildings that we're all very concerned about. Right now, this area is zoned in M1 District, which is a mixed-use zone for trying to promote redevelopment of the mills. And it's my understanding that this zoning classification has been around for quite a while. We have Mr. Philly in here tonight. I think he was probably Planning Board Chairman at the time that this was established. But basically, it was envisioned that we wanted to establish an area in town for mixed-use development that would promote redevelopment of the mills and restrict the, excuse me, respect the historic character of the mill buildings, but also providing an opportunity for some mixed-use developments to help support our very important downtown business community. Currently, the zoning allows a variety of uses, and some of the uses the Planning Board didn't feel were really appropriate. So as part of our review of the current zoning, we evaluated, are these uses really appropriate for this area or not? And if so, what other uses should we be incorporating? So as part of this process, the Planning Board underwent, where they looked at what the permitted uses are currently in this district and whether they make sense today, since this zoning is at least, to my knowledge, is at least about 15 years old when the M1 District was established. To give you sort of a perspective of the area, we're talking about an area that's roughly 8.4 acres in size. This map up here actually shows the key parcels within that district. There's 11 parcels, and I've mentioned a few of them. It includes a five-unit apartment building on the corner of Bay Road. It includes the Selectwood property, which some of you may know recently received approval from the Planning Board for a 15-unit rental residential use. And that construction is supposed to be starting sometime soon, what I understand. It includes the Bryant Rock development. I see many residents from that complex here this evening. And it includes the Durham Book Exchange Building. I refer to it as the Hampshire Fishing Day Building, because that's what it used to be back in the eighties. But includes the Eagle Block, the property owned by NCDC, which consists of the mill complex, and the Rivermore Development. And currently, we have some residential uses in this area. There's approximately 130 residential units currently. And this map that I've provided actually shows the density. And this yellow kind of void in the middle shows there's no units there currently. And that's really the kind of the focus and what the target is for this proposed mill rezoning. This all came about, of course, this has been a longstanding project of our NCDC, which is the Newmarket Community Development Corporation, and they've been working for over a decade in trying to redevelop the mills. And of course, as you know, the first phase of that project was Bryant Rock, and that has been viewed as a very successful project. And most recently, they have gone out with a request for proposals to try to stimulate development interest in their buildings. And we're talking about 180,000 square feet of currently vacant and underutilized mill buildings that they hope to redevelop. And this is part of the charge that was given to them by the town as part of their mission to assist the town in seeing the redevelopment of the mills. They recently went out with a request for proposals and received a couple of proposals, from what I understand. And one of them came to our local zoning board for a variance request. And unfortunately, that project was turned down for multitude of reasons. And it became very apparent to many of us that our current zoning really isn't working the way it's supposed to. There is currently a disconnect between what is envisioned in our master plan for the M1 District and what our current zoning allows, which is why we're here proposing to you an alternative to what we currently have. We had a meeting with our Town Council back in February, a joint meeting, and they provided a very clear directive to the Planning Board that, gee, it seems like the current zoning's not working. We'd like to have you review that zoning and come up with something that would work that respects what the needs and wishes of the community are, but also something that is realistic from a development and economic standpoint. The Planning Board rolled up their sleeves and went to work, and we started in March with a brainstorming session. We also call it a community visioning. And it became very clear that there was really kind of a consensus on the board that, gee, we all want to see redevelopment of the mills. We all think that our mixed-use development with the appropriate balance of commercial and residential would be appropriate. How can we come up with a zoning scheme that's going to achieve our goals, the goals of the town, but also can be realistic for the developers who are interested in rehabilitating the mill buildings? So we've been working since March. In June, it was a concept that was sort of culminated from all of our discussions, and the Planning Board embraced the idea of coming up with some kind of a zoning technique that would allow us to permit mixed-use development, provide a certain parameters were met, and that there were certain safeguards built into it so that many of the things that the public had concerns about could be addressed as part of our development review process. This came before the Planning, zoning board for review. We listened very, very carefully to what the community and the residents said. There were concerns about traffic. There were concerns about pedestrian safety. There were concerns about the character of the development and fitting in. There were concerns that, gee, we really need to have a core of development that will provide opportunities for supporting our downtown business community. So we tried to come up with something that would meet all of those needs. And what the proposal is, is basically a change in our zoning to allow mixed-use developments by special use permit. And special use permits are an innovative planning technique that is authorized under our state planning laws, and it provides flexibility to the Planning Board in having some discretion over how the development occurs, but it also provides some flexibility so that we have some design controls that we can achieve and provide incentives to go beyond what is normally permitted and what is normally expected from a developer. So the idea was that there would be, that residential, multi-family residential uses would be permitted by special use permit as part of an overall mixed-use development package, provided there be a 40-60% split between commercial, excuse me, between residential and non-residential uses. And as part of this, the Planning Board had a desire to build in some density bonuses to reward a developer who comes forward and goes above and beyond. And in this case, they came up with a point system where you could get an additional 6% if there was a certain amount of interior space provided for community arts and community public space and municipal use, which was something that was clearly articulated throughout our master plan process and throughout the visioning processes that were completed as part of the NCDC's work. And there would also be a bonus provided for extension of our public spaces, whether that be creation of interior courtyard, or extension of a river walk, or tying it in with our pedestrian system downtown. And there are additional bonuses worked in for historic preservation, because we all recognize the historic value of the mills and their importance in our cultural heritage. And the third, excuse me, the fourth bonus was for energy conservation. As you all know, we're all feeling the pinch with the rising costs of fuel and gasoline, and we're all becoming more and more aware of energy conservation. And the federal government is promoting green technology through a program called LEEDS, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But we tried to take these concepts and integrate them into our special use permit scheme. After embracing this concept, the Planning Board set to work to craft a ordinance which would implement those ideas. And we had several work sessions where we worked very closely to come up with something that we thought was realistic, again, would meet the needs of the community, and also be recognized for having some validity from an economic development standpoint. So that's basically why we're here and what we're trying to achieve. What I'd like to do is go over with you the specifics of the zoning proposal, and then I'll turn it over to John Badger, and he can entertain comments from the public and answer questions that you may have. As you know, our zoning ordinance is divided into sections, and there is a section for the M1 District. And what we're proposing is that mixed-use developments for redevelopment of the mills be permitted by special use permit. And if there are handups up here, do you all have a copy of the proposed language? And permitted uses, basically, we took our permitted use table, which is part of our zoning ordinance. We reviewed it, and we found that there were some uses that we didn't feel were really appropriate, including student housing, which was deleted from the M1 District as a permitted use. We put some caveats on how multi-family residential housing would be developed by including a footnote, which ties this whole thing to the mixed-use permitting criteria. We clarified that we wanted to try to encourage pedestrian oriented uses and that automotive, drive-through restaurants really wouldn't be appropriate. We also wanted to make sure that the uses would be compatible, so there was some restrictions placed on the types of manufacturing and research development, light manufacturing uses that would be permitted, to assure that they would be compatible with commercial uses, but also the residential uses that were proposed there. We also took a look at our dimensional controls, and for the most part, those are staying, the setback requirements are staying as is, with the exception of the density factors that are used to determine at what density will the residential portion of the project be developed. Currently, our zoning ordinance calls for a requirement of 20, excuse me, 20 units per acre. And we had a lot of discussion about this at the Planning Board level, saying, gee, our downtown area doesn't have a whole lot of land area, but we have a lot of building area, and it's critical to fill up the building, so maybe it would make more sense to tie our requirements to building floor area as opposed to land area. And so, we also thought, gee, we want to make sure we have the proper mix, so we said, let's say no more than 60% residential, no more than 40% non-residential. We also took a look at other communities and what they had in place with density requirements, and we saw a range. We saw the city of Somersworth and their downtown mill area, which is being redeveloped right now by the Chemberfords, that they have no density requirement whatsoever in their downtown mill district, which makes density, it isn't an issue in terms of facilitating redevelopment. We looked at Dover, and they had, depending upon different areas of the town, they had a density that ranged from 1,200 square feet per acre to 800 square feet per acre, including the mill district that they are trying to redevelop down at Soy Mills. So we came up with something that we thought made sense for Newmarket based on what is a reasonable size unit, and we came up with a figure of 1,000. So basically, and maybe I can jump into the examples so you can see how this works. We have a sheet here that has some numbers and calculations. Did you all get a copy of that? I know the Planning Board, but, and I'll walk you through that if you might have to share. Okay, so we determined that there's 180,000 square feet of vacant space in the mills, and with a 40-60% split, that translates into 108 square feet of residential and 72,000 square feet of non-residential. Non-residential would include retail, offices, community space, municipal space, and also any common areas that would be part of the development. So it's not just commercial. And from that, if you apply the square footage requirements, the ratios, you would come up with 180,000 square feet of space within the mills could be used for residential use. And if you divide that by the density factor of one unit per 1,000 square feet, you come up with a base of 108 units that could be developed within the mills as part of this scenario. And then, if you apply the bonuses, we're saying an extra 6% for interior space, which would allow you 115 units, another 6% for open space exterior, which would allow up to 121 units, 4% for historic preservation, which would bring the number to 126, and 4% for energy conservation. The only one that's a set either-or is the historic preservation factor, the conservation and the interior open space is on a sliding scale, so it's really a discretionary judgment call in part of the Planning Board as to which percentage the developer would be entitled to. So basically, that's how that works, and that's how you determine the number of units that would be permitted. As part of the process, we came up with mixed-use developments, a criteria for what type of mixed-use developments would be allowed, and it would be those that include rehabilitation and reconstruction of existing mill space. And it could also include a minimum of 5% oddest work space units, and under this scenario, then would be given an opportunity to use 50% of this floor area towards the non-residential allocation for that purpose. As part of this, there would be an overall master plan developed, which would show conceptually the overall development and show calculations and how the rubber dings along, and show plans for utilities, roadways, private public spaces, and show phasing plan and justification for dead city bonuses. And the Planning Board would review that plan, and this is not a real technical engineered drawing, it's more of a conceptual sketch of what is proposed, a land use plan, if you will. And that would be reviewed against the criteria that has been set forth here for granting a special use permit. And we would expect that a developer would provide us with a number of impact studies to show or illustrate that the criteria for granting of a special use permit had been met. And that would include a look at what is the cost of the project, what's the fiscal impact of the project on the town, and that would look at both the tax revenue that would be generated by the project, as well as what cost would the town incur to provide services. And the overall goal is to make sure that not only they balance out, but that there's positive fiscal impact on the town. And they would be required to do studies to document that. They would also have to provide a study of municipal service capacity. What is the capacity of the water and sewer system to accommodate this development? What is the capacity of the police department, the fire department? And if it currently, with this proposal, is in excess, then they would have to provide some solution, a mitigation plan to the town to illustrate how they would address that as part of the project. There would have to be a traffic study and a pedestrian safety study to show that the project would not have an adverse impact on those factors. There would also be a requirement for a public utility study and an environmental study to assure that there wouldn't be any adverse environmental impacts on the town. And it would be required that these studies be conducted and reviewed by an independent consultant working for the Planning Board so that we can get good information as to what those impacts are. So that going into this, we know what the impacts are going to be on the town, and that there's a plan in place to assure that any negative or adverse impacts will be ameliorated or mitigated to the benefit of the community. So that's basically the concept, and we also have some revisions that we've made tweaking, if you will, to our table of permitted uses, including removing student housing, adding footnote for multi-family, removing nursing homes, removing commercial amusement from the permitted use, and we feel that that was an appropriate use, and clarifying restrictions on light manufacturing, research development. And I think that's in a nutshell what the project, or what the proposal is. And at this point, I'd like to turn it back to John, and if you can entertain any questions and we can get an answer for you.
Thank you very much. I am. As you can see, there was a lot of time and effort put into this, into this proposal. We're going to open up the floor now for public comments. I would ask, he's pointing back at me. I would ask that when you come up to speak, please give your name and your address in Newmarket, and please be brief and concise so that everyone will have a chance to have something to say, if they wish so. So now I'll open up the floor for public comments. Anybody interested?
Hi, I'm Peyton Carr on Bay, live on Bay Road. I want to commend and applaud the Planning Board for your excellent work as a member of the ZBA that unfortunately saw fit to turn down the NCDC's application. I think if this work had preceded that, the application probably would have had maybe a different outcome. I do have one question to Diane, and maybe you stated it differently than what I heard. I believe you said on the breakdown of residential, non-residential, 60-40%, and I think you said no more for both of them, which suggests there would have to be exactly 60-40 without taking into account any of the bonuses. I suspect it was a little different.
It's, the base is 60-40, and we recognize that if there's bonuses, which would increase the number of units, that we would also have to increase the percentage of the square footage allocated to the various uses at the same time.
I understand that, but if you're saying 60-40, you're saying it has to be exactly 60-40, isn't there, isn't there some?
It's no more than 60%.
No more than 60%, or no less than 40%, basically. You said no more than 60, no more than 40, so.
That's right. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Didn't mean to confuse the issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
My name is Jori Allen, and I live at Bryant Rock, at 6 Bay Road. And one of the questions that I had after reading the draft is about the bonuses, and if a developer was successful in implementing each of those bonuses, that's an additional 20%, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that essentially, it could be 80-20, if you're talking about a ratio.
That's right.
One of my questions had to do with, I believe there was a restriction on residential use at, I think, I've forgotten the wording, but river level. Is that correct?
At the ground, yes.
Ground level.
We are encouraging commercial use or non-residential use at the ground level, but initially, we had talked about possibly restricting it outright, and we felt that that was too restrictive.
Okay, because the way I read it, it seemed to be a restriction at ground level and that encouragement at the next level to be non-residential.
It says discouraged.
It's discouraged.
At grade, it's discouraged.
Oh, discouraged, at grade, okay. Well, then, that answers my question. And the second question is, and this is based on information from a previous meeting, I was wondering, according to that map, the town parking lot is not included in the M1 jurisdiction. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So any proposal under this zoning would not include that property?
That's not correct, with all due respect. We have a provision in our ordinance where we encourage shared parking alternatives. So if, especially in the M1 District- So if, especially in the M1 district and the M2 district, so we have an option where if a property owner doesn't have the land on their own property, that they can enter into a lease agreement or a shared parking arrangement with one of their neighbors. And that can satisfy the parking requirements of the town. And the idea is, we want to try to encourage the sharing of parking, but also, you know, making available better utilization of what we do have available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Leo Fillion, Three Lafayette Ave. My comments, I am a member of the NCDC, but my comments are more based on my six years on a planning board and 12 years on a zoning board of adjustment and how these change in regulations might be difficult to interpret or to enforce. It seems like a lot of quote site plan issues have been rolled into this zoning board, into this special use permit. And it makes it much more complicated for the planning board to address these as you can't waive them. And any decisions you make on these issues are appealable to the zoning board of adjustment. Now, a couple more particular issues on residential units that are not permitted. I also have spent 21 years as facilities manager for other mills. It's one of the last 10 years being a de facto manager for the NCDC. So I am quite familiar with the mills. I'm more familiar than not anyone in Newmarket, but everyone in Newmarket combined, based on these 30-plus years I've been spent in the mills. Residential units are not permitted below the 100-year elevation are discouraged at grade building floor level. Now, if you look at the mills along the river, JK L&amp;M, we call them, they're six-story buildings. And I guess if you look at the, starting at the bottom, you look at the first floor elevation, you have two doors at floor level plus a loading dock. On the second floor, you have one door going out at grade level. At the third story, you have three doors going out at grade level plus a loading dock. So when you say discouraged at grade building floor level, you almost knocked out three floors out of the building already at grade level. If you go into the Souflex building, the first, that also is a five-story, six-story places, your first floor has one door at grade level plus a loading dock. The second floor has two doors plus a semi-loading dock at second level, at grade level. The third story has one door going out at grade level, which is the main entrance. You have another door going out to the main street at grade level next to the Eagles. So you've almost knocked off four floors if you don't allow any residential on any of those units at grade level. You realize the grades change quite a bit in there. And I guess I think that makes it kind of difficult. One of these uses here, the proposed mixed-use shall include provisions satisfactory to the planning board to ensure that current and municipal service capacity for police, fire, public works, water, soil, general government, recreation will not be adversely affected by the development. And the planning board will require a report on the municipal services to demonstrate compliance with this. If you're talking about 30, 40,000, 20, 30,000 square feet of commercial space, I think it would be difficult for a developer to determine what impact will be on any of these commercial spaces because they won't, many of them won't be developed for four, five years. They won't even know which ones, what is going to go into this place. So it makes it kind of difficult to determine what the commercial, the requirements for town services will be at this initial application. The total square, square footage of the buildings, they were taken from conceptual drawings. And if you actually look in the buildings, you find in some areas, yes, you have a floor density, an area of so much, but the headroom is probably a foot or two feet high or three feet high or whatever. So it's without specifying more clearly what, what the headroom would be. And a lot, a few of these buildings, the floors are, they're not complete floors, they're dirt, whatever. So that would be another problem. I guess in page five, I have an old one here. Add notes to light manufacturing, research, and development, limiting hours of operation to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and prohibiting usage with store, process, use, manufacture, or create hazardous waste materials and other ways. I mean, you would need a variance for everything you put in there, basically. If you, if every, even if you had an office, you're going to have a wastebasket with, going to generate some waste. And what, how you define hazardous waste, I was, a long many years ago, record, Resource Conservation Recovery Act 1976, and how they define hazardous waste as flammable, reactive, toxic, a few other. And they also had the, I mean, light bulbs are considered hazardous waste. Half the stuff in your home underneath the sink is considered by record hazardous waste. So I don't know how, what kind of processes you can get in here that's not going to generate some hazardous waste. I think something like this, if it was in the site plan, would be waivable. You'd be able to, but the way it's written here, if this is part of the zoning, you'd need a variance on every use you had. Another couple others here. I guess that's enough, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Bernard Gordon. I'm in Abutter. I live on Bay Road. I'm a 40-year resident of Newmarket in Durham. And I want to first express, as Mr. Fillion just did, and the speaker before, my compliments to the, to the planning board and to Diane. Most of you are volunteers, and you have hard work, and you've faced very tough choices. And I think what I want to say first, you've come up with a concept that is aimed at bringing the town out of a dilemma and maybe even doldrums. Because as we all know, the mills are there, they're largely empty. Few, if anyone, seems to want them other than as living spaces, probably mainly rentals. And three miles down the road is an expanding University of New Hampshire, which means the strong likelihood that on our main street, our unique, striking, and truly precious waterfront, it will have nothing but bedrooms and heavy-duty, whether we call it this or not, heavy-duty student housing. That's the plan. These proposed units will average 1,000 square feet, and that's the size of something between an efficiency apartment and a one-bedroom apartment. And in this plan, according to the proposal, there'll be more than 130 of them. That means 200 or 250 more cars staying in town. That can't be what we want Newmarket's future to look like on its new, tremendously improving Main Street with its enormous potential. And we can fine-tune, you on the board can fine-tune the present plan. And maybe make the units larger, and you may be able to bring the number of units down to 95 or 100. But it's still a bedroom community on Main Street. And the plan itself is the result of responding to fear. And that mindset is not the mindset in which anyone wants to make decisions. There's an old adage that says, never make changes for negative, for negative reasons. Yet that's precisely what has led to these proposed changes. We're told that the market, the market will only sustain living space or so-called residential units. And we're told that the market needs to have 130 or in the most recent, before that incarnation, 150 or more residential units, or else the market will not invest here. But there's, that's, that's what we're told. That's the reality. That's what we're told is the reality. But there's another reality. And that reality is that in this year, in 2008, and looking forward for at least another year and more likely until 2010, we are in a restrictive capital market where investors and bankers are not going to loosen their purse strings for at least another year. And then after that, probably in late '09 or '10, then the economy, by every sound person who's looked at this, on the Republican side, Greenspan, on the Democratic side, Rubin, and all of their cohorts have said that in their, in their expectation, the economy from late '09 or 2010 will resume its growth, and it will be looking for places to build and to invest. And what that means for us is first, that we should not be making life-changing decisions, and that's what these are, that we should be holding off, not making any permanent decisions. And that's what's being asked for, because they are permanent decisions, until we give the capital and the real estate markets time to shake out. If we don't do that, we'll be operating on the basis of fear. And we'd be, and we will be permanently consigning Newmarket to what I've called it earlier, and so many people have already called it over the past year or two, a bedroom community. Now, even within these proposed changes, there are severe problems of unclarity. One of the speakers earlier spoke of unclarities on the, the grade levels. Another speaker spoke about unclarities with regard to the square footage or acreage. There's no clarity on the basis for the density assignments, whether for square footage or acreage. And there are other, many unclarities which will make these proposed changes vulnerable to charges, to challenges, rather, by court injunction. And we should avoid, we should avoid that. And we can, we can, if we simply decide that now is not the time to make decisions that will set our future for the foreseeable future, and that will bring great traffic congestion, many, many more people, and a glut of rental properties on our Main Street. I wanted to say simply one last comment. This is as a matter of a personal comment. It was stated a few moments ago by Ms. Hardy, who I regard in high regard. She referred to the Bryant Rock development as a successful development. I have no reason to think that she is aware that on the 26th of July, a court suit was lodged in Rockingham Court, which asserts, among other things, that, and this is only one of many things, that the roof in Bryant Rock was put in place in direct violation of state statutes, the International Building Code, and Newmarket's own building code. That's clearly an undeniable aspect, and there are many, many other charges. So the assertion that Bryant Rock is a successful development is and will be very much challenged over the next months, and that case is due to come up in Rockingham Court in late October. But again, to sum up what I really wanted to bring to your attention, we are asked to make a decision and a set of decisions based on an environment of apprehension and fear that nobody wants to go into our mill project. And that is in an environment where the capital markets and the real estate markets are in a climate of, as we all know, restrictive attitudes. We need to hold off and wait until the markets and confidence returns, because that will happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Arlen?
Arlen Chaffey, Two Packers Falls Road, also in the Newmarket Community Development Corporation. Interestingly enough, we, the NCDC, had commissioned a study of what would go into the mills back in October of 2006, when the capital markets were arguably strong, much stronger than they are currently. And the assessment that we had gotten from both our, our planning advisor, as well as our economic advisor, Bonds and Company, was, at the time, commercial industrial market demand is low, and one cannot feasibly repair and redevelop the buildings to current codes and requirements. Insufficient building configurations, the layout of the existing buildings is not suited to contemporary needs of commercial or light industrial. In feasible development, business revenues could not afford to cover the high costs associated with bringing those buildings up to current codes for commercial, and lack of available subsidies. On the residential side, laughably now, but in October '06, true, condominium, condominium housing demand is so strong that it can be used to redevelop the buildings and provide support for other desirable uses. This was aimed towards a mixed-use angle. The demand for retail office and restaurant is positive, but could not normally afford the cost of new construction or historic renovation in this location. That's the important piece, because if you go back to the, the RFP that the NCDC put out, we impose minimums there. And when we had originally convened on developing the RFP, it was, our minimums were higher. And this is the point that was made to us. And that is, any non-residential that you try to put in to that project for a mixed-use component is going to be concessionary. That is, you're going to take less for the project overall on a sale basis. Well, the good news is, the NCDC is a nonprofit. You know, we can sell it for as little as we'd like if it's a, a good development. But that was kind of an eye-opener for us. There's a need and positive examples of artist live-work housing, and the mixed-use approach will bring substantial tax advantages to the town. So they did agree that pushing for some reasonably developable, developable non-residential was a good aspect and would also lead to a community-based. Scroll forward to March 21st, 2008, as we were undergoing the ZBA process. And I went back to Dick Bonds and said, hey, what's going on in the market? His statement in general was, the underlying market fundamentals, such as demographics and employment, track the growth that he had originally stated in his 2006 survey. But the data masks the impact of the financial crisis on the development climate for the Main Street mill complex. Lack of financing and liquidity in the for-sale housing market, declining prices, and a looming recession has temporarily decimated the for-sale housing market. There's virtually no money available to finance new for-sale condominium development. However, with respect to rental apartment properties, capital is available, and you're likely to see interest at that level, perhaps into conversion into condominium at a later date. Summary of the current outlook was condominium redevelopment. They're well-suited for this. However, based on financial downturns, current market conditions wouldn't support that. What you could look toward is, you know, built, built for condo spec, but rental properties. Rental apartment development is... Rental apartment development is well-suited. Restaurant and retail uses, our earlier study identified support for restaurant, retail, art, and related, but constrained by lack of proximate surface parking, which we know. But the financing crisis and potential of a recession is likely to reduce the ability of attracting such occupancies. Commercial office redevelopment, based upon our analysis, the Main Street Mill Complex would not be competitive, given other locations available in the market area. The simple way to view this is, we're on the backside of the Great Bay. So all this is stuff that we know, but it gets to my point, and that is, it would appear that the structure of the M-one amendment language that you're putting forward, you know, took to heart or at least examined what the NCDC had been asking of developers throughout the process. That is, that a certain amount be, of space be dedicated to non-residential, that an open courtyard and waterfront access would be part of any successful development proposal, artist-live-work housing down the line. So if I'm correct in that assumption, I'd like to kind of jump forward a bit to, one of our tenants in that RFP was the establishment of minimums for non-residential and the artist-live-work space, ten percent of any residential units, and also reserved space minimums for civic and cultural use. And if you recall, the numbers associated with the non-residential were ten thousand square feet for non-residential on a net basis, and that the civic and cultural was a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet. So, in other words, out of the net available area within those structures, which is somewhere in the one-twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand range, depending on whose tape measure you're using, we, the NCDC, had asked for twelve thousand five hundred, or roughly ten percent on a net basis. But as I walk through the math that's offered, including the bonuses, we don't quite get there. And I guess my question is, if this board was crafting this language to accommodate a likely development scenario, as we've seen in our responses to the RFP, and I don't, just as a side, I don't think we're operating in fear if we go for residential in the downtown area. If so, we've been operating in fear since the mid-eighties when Rivermore went in, and since the early two thousands when Bryant Rock went in. So I don't think we're operating from fear, we're operating from market realities. But back to my point, if this board was reflecting upon the RFP language that we put out to developers, and it appears to have done so in a number of areas in this zoning language, I just want to make sure we can walk through the math and find out, you know, does it accommodate those minimums, you know, which is twelve thousand five hundred square feet of non-residential net? One of the challenges, and I don't know if the board contemplated this in the sixty-forty base calculation, but one of the challenges is the sheer mass of these buildings. And I don't mean just the size on the outside, I mean how big they are just to hold themselves up. As a, for instance, if you take a stick-built structure, you're going to see a takedown of somewhere between ten and fifteen percent from the outside of the building to the inside. You end up with eighty-five, ninety percent utilization inside the, inside the structure. Because of the nature of these buildings, that number is point-six-nine, so it's less than seventy percent usable. That's why you see the hundred and eighty thousand come all the way down to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The sheer mass of the walls takes that away. So it kind of contorts the calculus, and the last point is, there may be unintended consequences to that when you use a thousand square feet on your gross basis. When you get upwards of, you know, you get to the top end, let's say you've got a developer that meets all four criteria, you have roughly a hundred, well, you have a hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred in gross square footage devoted, but using the point-six-nine factor, that's really ninety thousand square feet available to put those units in, which comes out to be six hundred and eighty-five square foot a unit, which makes for, you know, relatively small a unit. So as you bump the unit counts up and using that thousand square foot on a gross basis, I'm not sure if it reflects the point-six-nine utilization on a net basis. So that bears examining. What I would posit is this, if you reflect upon, you know, some of the things that the NCDC tried to do in getting developer response, and you note that our minimums were twelve thousand five hundred, that that should be perhaps at the top end. So with maximum credits, you know, you can get that down to a twelve thousand five hundred net. And then one structural question for you, and maybe we can walk through a math example that way, but up to fifty percent of the artist-live-work spaces can contribute, and my understanding is after you get done all the bonuses, calculations, et cetera, let's say that you ended up with fourteen artist-live-work spaces at a thousand units per, does that mean that seven thousand square feet gets detracted from the non-residential requirement and gets allowed, you know, it gets brought up to the allowed side? Okay, so that helps the math out, but I think we need to take a look at that so that we end up at the far end of the scale, giving at least what the minimums are, maybe a little bit of a stretch, but at the minimums. And I do have some comments about a couple of the credits, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there and see if there's additional comment, and I can come back.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes, please.
My name's Jablonski Bay Road. I've lived all my life in New Market, and over the years, things were done quickly and badly, which makes us the way we are today. And we also, in those days, fought Onassis for coming into New Market. So if we can organize in those times, we are only twelve square miles, and Onassis wanted to take over quite a bit of our town. We fought and we won on that. We were told to move out, but that's all right because we were against it. But I'm just saying, if we hurry, just like we did years ago and did it half like it is, we are in a mess. This town is in a mess. The developers came in and developed and developed, and now we have practically nothing because we just let them do it, have their way. We could name you people that we know that sold us, sold this town away. And people will never forget these people who have done that. They have not, they'll just never forget it, at least I won't, and I know a lot of people the same as me will never forget. I just not, they just didn't listen to some of the people and did what they wanted to, and they just over, we were overgrown, and all our land is gone. And if we changed this M want-to-be one, Cheney will be right on top of that hill on Elm Street with a great big two or three tower, or whatever tower he's going to build up there. So we're opening another high-rise with more apartments, and I don't know where they're all going to park, if you have a hundred and so apartments over here in the mills. If they're going to build across the street, you're going to use the town parking lot? That will no longer be the town parking lot? Is that going to go to the mills? I mean, what's it all going to end? People do have concerns, I'm sorry, they just don't come out and say, all they say is they're going to just vote no on everything, and that's not what we want, but that's what we're going to be getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Caleb Witten. I live at Bryant Rock. I'm a member of the current Board of Directors of NCDC. I was formerly a member of the Board of NCDC and its president when Bryant Rock was formed. I have a concern about really the issue of residential and non-residential. Non-residential, you're really saying is commercial of some sort, whether it's office space, like manufacturing, retail, or whatever. I just don't know how you come up with a forty percent number. And maybe I'm not supposed to know, but I just can't justify it in my own mind. You look at the history of the Mill Complex all along the river. It came into being because of the proximity to good transportation. Commercial activity comes as a result of getting raw materials in and sending out finished goods. They did it by the river. Mills disappeared when motor vehicles came in in the thirties, trains were taken off, and we lost throughout New England textile business to the South because of cheaper labor, better transportation. Boats weren't needed anymore. What has happened since the thirties? I'm not a whole-time New Market resident. I came here in ninety-two, but I've seen nothing in records indicating ongoing survivors in the commercial world in these mill buildings. Timberland was here, there's been a variety of companies. I don't know all the names of the companies, but they've disappeared. What's left is Souflex. Just look at Souflex. Since I've been here in ninety-two, it's gone through three or four different owners, each buyer wanting to get rid of it. The current owner is surviving because of very favorable rental atmosphere that no developer is going to make available. NCDC can do it because of the way it received the mills. All I'm trying to say is, I see a diminishing commercial activity occurring in the mill buildings. And I don't know whether or not the board is facing those facts. I think those facts should be looked at. When you talk about wanting commercial activity, what are you giving for an incentive to attract that commercial activity? Are you giving tax breaks? You doing some infrastructure specialties? I don't see that happening. So how are you going to get that forty percent? I would like that kind of discussion to occur within your board under some conclusions. As far as residential density, my background is in banking. I went through the difficult times of the late eighties when the real estate went south and banks went, disappeared off the face of the map in New Hampshire. I was where the bank had survived. I also had access to businesspeople making business decisions. There were all kinds of survivors in that period, that tough period. Mr. Gordon refers to the current tough times, and they are tough, but we're going to come out of it. In the meantime, good businesspeople are making good business decisions as to what they're going to do next, and that includes developers. It's up to them to find the financing, not this board. You've got to make sure they have it, but they're the ones that got to find it. I just, if you're really wanting commercial activity, again, figure out how to create an incentive to attract it. I don't see anything in this proposal. As far as density of residential activity, if you can bring more people into downtown, the ramifications of that is sprucing up of existing Main Street retail space, more attractive occupants, that's a plus. There's nothing that says it's got to be in the mill buildings. We're talking about the downtown area, making it vital. That's the drift of my observations, and good luck in your efforts.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
My name is Lisa Henderson. I live at six Maple Crest, and I moved here from Dover a few years ago, and I did so because it was more convenient to where I was working at the time, but also because I was looking for a livable, walkable community like I experienced in Dover, where I also saw a lot of successful mill redevelopment. And as a young person who, I guess, sometimes feels like an endangered species in the seacoast, struggling with the high cost of housing and now the added pressures of fuel expenses, I would look to a community that felt family-friendly, and I'm fortunate to live in a neighborhood that where families are still carrying on and thriving, and we're a part of the crew that you see out with strollers, with little ones, with my eighteen-month-old son. And I think that sense of community that comes from interacting on the street and from enjoying a vibrant downtown that has both residential and commercial uses, but is realistic about where mill redevelopment is occurring to support the seacoast's need for additional housing, proves that this is a resource that New Market can capitalize on. It's been done successfully already in New Market's downtown. This would just be a complement to what's already been so successfully done. So I have been watching with great interest as all of this has been unfolding and always been in favor of a majority residential redevelopment of the mills. I also, as my professional background is in housing, I'm the director of the Workforce Housing Coalition, which is based in Portsmouth and engages in public education efforts to inform folks of how we can do these kinds of things, find creative adaptive reuse opportunities in our communities so that we can direct our development into existing developed areas as opposed to going out into green spaces and finding a way to provide a range of housing options for our diverse workforce that includes young professionals. You know, I've heard various comments, and I understand as the proposal is written that any applicant would have to demonstrate that their proposed development efforts wouldn't have any detrimental impacts on adjacent properties, traffic, pedestrian safety, noise, municipal services, property values, aesthetics, parking, and historic values. And I wanted to offer myself up, and Diane knows that I'm here as a resource for sort of best practices around the country, and would say that without a doubt, there is absolutely conclusive evidence that residential developments on this scale and of this type of redevelopment, when brought in seamlessly like this into an existing residential and downtown mix, do not negatively impact property values. And there have been plenty of New Hampshire studies that would show that the school impact and school enrollment is always something that is of concern to folks, is absolutely and school enrollment is always something that is of concern to folks, is absolutely negligible and probably even more so in a mill development. And all studies showing that rental housing, in particular, multifamily housing, multi-unit housing, produces far less than one child, a school-aged child, per unit. In fact, for a property of five units or more, these, again, New Hampshire-based studies indicate it's .22 children per unit. So the days of the Brady Bunch and large families just aren't the case anymore. So to folks that have concerns on that, I think you'll find that both demographics and real-life studies will bear that out, that that's not the case anymore. But all of this is pretty well at my fingertips, and I'm happy to be a resource going forward. But it was important for me to come tonight first and foremost as a resident of New Market and someone who cares a lot about this community and thinks that the N C D C is on the right path to ensure that we have a lasting asset in our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Arlen, did you have any other further comments before we close this down?
Sure. I could go on all night.
Oh, well, we won't do that.
But I won't. Are the Sox playing tonight?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Oh, yeah.
Let's see, who are they playing? Let me think.
Yeah, Yankees, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, so just quickly, back to the number crunching, and I don't want to get into, you know, everyone whipping out calculators here, but do ask that, you know, that we take a hard look and see that the math works out. I mean, the responses that we have gotten from developers in the past, those are likely development scenarios, and those show, you know, a net square footage of 15,000 to 20,000 square feet for non-residential after all is said and done on a net basis. So I got no problem, you know, no issue going on the gross basis. That's, you know, that's a good way to start because the buildings are so massive. Please acknowledge the .69, you know, over 30 percent takedown, net to gross, and I applaud the utilization of bonus credits as well. I did want to spend a couple quick minutes on the credits themselves, though. The interior space and the open space, you know, civic uses are pretty clear. You can gauge whether or not those activities are incorporated into the plan. I have a little difficulty with historic preservation and energy conservation, not with the notion of why you would want those, fully support that. And I think the RFP on the historical side said, you know, retain as much of the character as you can. But the way it's worded, in fact, in the actual language, actually drives you down a road of adhering to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Rehabilitation. That's a specific term. That's federally regulated, and it's used in the Preservation Tax Credit Program, the 20 percent tax credit program, and it's not a small undertaking. So the developer is going to decide whether or not they're going to go the Preservation Tax Credit or no. In this kind of situation, the answer that we've been getting all along is probably not. There's a 10 percent tax credit that's available. It's a lot lower threshold, and most developers will go for that. And the way our RFP is worded, it grants for that. So there may be, you know, you may want to relax that a little bit and look at what the 10 percent credit is instead of the 20 percent Preservation Tax Credit Program because the other one is, the developer's not going to make up their mind over a 4 percent unit in square footage density. That's going to be the least of their concerns if they go after the Preservation Tax Credit Program.
Is that 10 percent, is that also a federal?
I believe that's a federal program as well, but it's a lot lower threshold.
It's a lower threshold.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing is, I'm not an expert on these matters. I wish Mike Provost was here, but I believe it has to do with the property and whether or not it's designated into a historic district. Excuse me?
Part of a National Register Historic District.
It is. How, right. However, however, the property was both sides of the river and where the other side of the river has already been developed as far as Bryant Rock. We, you know, we may have X'd ourselves out of being eligible for that Preservation Tax Credit, 20 percent tax credit anyway. So that wording's a little nebulous. You may want to take a look at that. And then the LEED, I tried to understand this, I really did. I did a lot of research as to LEED certification, and there's different levels that you can attain, but you don't know that you've attained them until you have attained them. So as far as applying for a credit standpoint, I think it would be too late. By the time you actually got your designation and went through that, the developer, you know, would already be down the road. This is not, you know, I understand the energy efficiency and I understand the historic preservation. We address the historic preservation to the extent possible in the RFP, and if you go with the lower threshold on the historic tax credit, that would probably fly. The LEED one, you know, I don't see, I don't see how that would come into play. Fortunately, it's only a 4 percent tax credit. So again, if we can get to the, if we can get to that 12,500, net is the, you know, the top achievement that a developer might attain.
Excuse me, Arlen?
Yes.
I think you're contradicting yourself. Did I not hear you say 15,000 to 20,000 square feet? A few minutes ago.
15,000 to 20,000 square feet.
15,000 to 20,000 is, yeah, would be.
Non-residential.
Non-residential is what we were seeing from the developers in the past. So, I mean, to, you know, that's something you could, we're talking 2,500 to 5,000 square feet there, but what, in the RFP, we stipulated 12,500 minimum. What we've seen is 15,000 to 20,000 in response. So they met the minimums and went beyond. So, you know, I'll live with however you want to handle that, but, you know, the way we've stipulated is 12,500 net minimum, and we've seen 15,000 to 20,000 in current responses. And I just want to make sure, you know, when an applicant comes before the Planning Board, they want to know exactly what the rules are, and you want to know exactly how to interpret what their proposal shows, so there's not ambiguity. And I heard mentioned, right, I heard mentioned common areas could also, could also inure to the non-residential piece. And that may want to be, you may want that somehow outlined or mentioned in the language.
I thought we included that.
I'm not sure I saw it, because it begs you into a gray area of, on the residential side, everything that is not a unit, you know, then you could conceivably push for as being non-residential, could you not?
We did have that discussion when we came up with the formula, and it was understood that non, that common areas, i.e. the lobby to the multifamily, that would be considered non-residential and would not be considered residential.
So that would contribute toward.
That would contribute to the 40 percent.
Here's what has woken me up a couple times, is we get, you know, that close with developer proposals now or in the future, and we end up going, I mean, you don't want to air, you know, obviously, this Board wants to see non-residential in there, and the N C D C does as well through our RFP, but you don't want to get so close that you end up going into the zoning, the variance process anyway. But you don't want to leave, you know, anything on the table. So I'm glad it's you guys figuring it out. But no, really, really appreciate the work that's been done that far, this far. Now, I did my own number crunching, and like I said, I didn't want to get into calculator wars, but I did kind of a sliding scale on that 60-40 up to 65-35 and 70-30 and saw where things mapped out. And it looks like you've got a spreadsheet that'll allow you to do that what-if, if you decide to go that way. I think the way it's currently written, it may be problematic for developers.
I had a question, Arlen. You mentioned earlier in the Bond study, 2006, and then they reviewed it again in 2008. They talked about a strong demand for residential. Did that study specifically look at, as an example, student housing versus meds and eds and some of these other things?
This, you know, the implication was market rate, so, you know, affordable to market rate housing, not student housing. Specifically, you know, we wouldn't have accepted, the N C D C wouldn't have accepted that, and actually, you know, we were the ones pointing out that the current zoning included student housing in there. So that wasn't our intent. But you could make a case for it, that you could fill that up with students if you wanted to. And that's why I said the unintended consequences when you use a thousand-square-foot gross and you net that down, and then you start awarding bonuses, watch how that slides up as to the number of units you get, because right now, your average unit size is about 700 square feet.
You're doing that calculating with all the bonuses?
Actually, the math, it's commutative, so it works right across the board. It's 687 square feet per unit at the current, at your current calculations.
And that's assuming that 70 percent of the gross floor area is usable for residential purposes.
Correct, correct. Yeah. So, you know, either slide the divisor upwards. And where you end up, I think currently, is somewhere in the 135, 140 units as a max.
It's 131.
131 is the max.
Yeah, so if you slide your base percentage from 60 to 65 or 70, just watch what it does that way.
We would have to take a look at what the net effect of that. It may possibly increase the density factor as well from 1,000 square feet to maybe 1,200 or 1,300.
And folks who have been through on the tours, whether it's the Planning Board, the Z B A, the public during the Heritage Festival, and I've got to believe the numbers in the hundreds now that have walked through that, because Mike Provost has been conducting those for five or six years. You know, first-time walkers through are always amazed at how quirky the buildings are. They're a real challenge. And not to rattle the saber, but going back to, remember the public input session for the public hearing for the petition language, Steve Cecil was up, and he said there's 100 million square feet of empty mill buildings in, you know, northeast, including upstate New York, and a million square feet a year get redeveloped. So that says we've got, you know, 100 years to get our job done.
Hopefully, we can get it done before.
Or sooner. No, they won't last.
Thank you, Arlen.
Thank you very much, Arlen.
Have you decided on a developer yet?
I'm sorry, could you state your name and your address, please?
Peter Gordon, and I'm on Bay Road. I live on Bay Road. Have you people decided on a?
We don't pick the developer.
Who does?
That gentleman.
N C D C, right there.
I see. Has N C D C decided on a developer yet?
We have a letter of intent with a developer.
Can you tell me who it is?
Absolutely. It's N M R. It's a, you always have.
Yes, would you please, Arlen?
The developer that we have with a letter of intent currently is called N M R, New Market Mills Redevelopment LLC, and it's a partnership between the Architectural Heritage Foundation, which is a nonprofit out of Boston area that specializes in adaptive reuse of old buildings, and also Chinburg Builders, who did Bryant Rock.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Not seeing any. Yes, sir.
Just one comment about the sliding scale that was referred to. We need to recall that at the present zoning limitations, we're talking in the range of about 40, 45 units. Obviously, that is not likely to be realizable. But then we immediately get to the point where Mr. Chafee was discussing it, and it gets to 130 or 131, as in the present plan. That is essentially a tripling. That's almost a tripling. And that's why I referred earlier, and another speaker referred earlier, to the developments that have taken place in the town that have led it to become perilously close to becoming a bedroom community. Now, Mr. Chafee also referenced, or others may have referenced, the notion of the available square footage of redevelopable mill space in the northeast. And my neighbor, Cal Witten, asked, well, what are the incentives that would lead a developer to consider coming to New Market? Well, we have the one that is most in the minds of anybody who has ever bought a piece of property or tried to buy a house or whatever, and that is location and location and location. And that is what upstate New York does not have. We are within 20 minutes of the Interstate 95. Upstate New York is not. They dropped the ball. I know that area. For part of my life, I grew up in Glover'sville, New York. They dropped the ball. They saw what was happening, and they did nothing about it. They're not going to come back in anyone's lifetime. But New Market is so close to where the explosion in demography is taking place. That's why I urged you earlier to hold your fire, to be patient. We've waited 100 years. We can wait another two. Well, times will get better. We all know that. Thanks very much.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I will close the public hearing. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate all your comments. We've taken lots of notes, and we will proceed accordingly. Thank you very much. For the Planning Board, we've had some very good input. For the Planning Board, we've heard a lot of input tonight, and I wanted to see if we might think about scheduling one more workshop to try and take advantage of the comments that we've heard here at the public hearing. And I guess.
When would that meeting be?
Then when would that meeting be?
We meet on September 16th in September because we have a primary coming up on the second Tuesday. So the first Tuesday would be available to us if we wanted to have it two weeks out, or a week out, I guess, excuse me.
You mean, you're talking about the 9th of September?
We could do that.
That would be a Tuesday night.
Or the 2nd, if you prefer to do it next week.
I will not be here. That meeting will be chaired by Mr. Roy.
If Mr. Roy is here.
But what does the September 9th do for everybody?
It might be tight for me. I have my bank back, but I'm on a field trip that day.
Okay. It's good for everybody else. Why don't we plan on September 9th, and Peter can be the chairman, because I will be somewhere away from here. And we can, maybe Diane, you can doodle around all the notes that I see you've taken and look at the numbers again as we talked about earlier.
Okay.
And.
Let me ask, Erica takes great notes. Would the meeting minutes be out before then?
Yes, they have to be.
That'll help.
No, we won't.
7:00 PM in the conference chair.
Yeah.
I have to confirm that with.
Subject to confirmation.
Kathy Castle, that's the game plan.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to talk about other than?
Just a quick question, just a second. Is that an alternative?
That's an alternative date if the 9th isn't available.
I'll be gone.
Are people available for that date as well?
I'm gone both days.
So you didn't get out of it.
So you didn't get out of it.
Okay. Anything else? Then do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.